Cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and the free and equal liberty of all. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay. Old business. Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from August 9, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from my fellow commissioners?
None.
None, no.
Okay, I just need a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes from August 9, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Second consideration ordinances. Second consideration ordinance 8189, demolition special assessments.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the August 9 meeting. As a reminder, these are demolitions assessments for demolitions prepared by the cities and these will be assessed to the properties for the amounts listed. If there's any questions, I'll answer those for you.
Any questions? Okay. I just need a roll call, so we'll start with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Leonard, aye.
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 And Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next up. Second consideration ordinance 8190, nuisance special assessments.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been three small changes on this item since the August 9 agenda item. They're listed in your policy report. We did have three property owners pay their special assessment. These related to city costs for weed or grass abatement or other miscellaneous abatements over the course of the year, and they will be assessed to the properties minus the three that didn't submit payment since the August 9 meeting.
Okay. Do I have any questions? Okay, just a roll call. Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle.
Aye.
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 Okay, moving right along. New business, public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the Commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the Commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. So who do we have?
Mr. John Bargary.
Okay, Mr. John Bargary. Yeah, come on up. Podium. Yep, and just state your name and address, please, and you have two to three minutes.
John Bargary, 1101 Michigan, Leavenworth, Kansas. I'm just having an appeal about a sidewalk issue that's been going on for a couple of years at my place, and I just had a lot of issues with the sidewalk regarding safety issues and other waste issues. The sidewalk goes to the dead end, 11th and Michigan. No other conjoining sidewalks in this intersection. So, you know, waiting for pedestrians to walk down a sidewalk that goes to the dead end, you know, that's an accident waiting to happen. You've got pedestrians going down a sidewalk to the dead end, nowhere to go. So in my book, that's a waste of time and money, to waste material and time on something that goes to the dead end. You know, I'm just, you know, like I said, there's no other conjoining sidewalks, and to me personally, it's just a waste of money and time. I hope you guys understand, you know, what the issue is on the sidewalk, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bargary. Next up.
We have Wayne Art.
Wayne, Mr. Wayne, would you say Art? Please state your name and address, please.
Wayne Art, 614 North 13th Terrace, Leavenworth, Kansas. I'm talking about like for the property lines and property values that you assess to our properties. Basically, how can you assess a property value according to the aerial view of the GIS people you get it from and showing that, like for example, my property, the back fence line is supposed to be 65 feet from one side to the other, and it's only 58 feet from one fence to the other. You won't let me widen my fences because it has to be surveyed. There's never been a survey done on our subdivision since it was built in 1963. The city should have done that a long time ago, is my value. And how can you properly assess my property when I can't even use all that property that you're assessing me for? I'd like to see you get out there and do a survey of that subdivision, especially my property, because I'm missing seven feet that you're taxing me for.
Okay, Mr. Art, I'm going to make a quick comment. If you go up to the county courthouse and talk to Terry Lois Smashburn in Register of Deeds, she has all that.
I already been there, ma'am.
Have you? Okay.
I have been to the county GIS Register of Deeds. I've been, that's why I can safely say there's never been a survey on our subdivision since it was built. But they go by the aerial view of GIS of what our property lines are. But the people right over here in your city won't let me move that fence lines to my property lines until I find the property line stakes, which I've looked, can't find. They want, and now y'all want me to pay $1,500 for a survey that should have been done by the city years ago and made sure that stayed there. You want me, I'd like to, you want to assess my property, then assess it correctly. Make sure I have full use of all property you are assessing me for. It's what.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Art.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on there? Okay. Anybody else have anything? I know we'll go into the neutral rate and budget, but that I'll ask on comments then, but if you had anything else before. Yes.
My name is Alexander Castillo, and I live at 729 Prospect Street in Leavenworth, Kansas. And I just want to know why you guys keep raising my taxes when I have two rentals right on both sides. They never keep their property up, the grass is hardly cut, mine's always cut and everything, yet my taxes goes up and the property around there is not what you guys are charging me for taxes. And it's supposed to go up, I believe, at like 15% and on ours, it went up over 25%, and I just want to know why.
Okay. That actually should have been with the open public hearing. This was, but this was for everything else other than that.
Okay, this is my first time over here. I've never been here before, so I don't know how it's run.
Right.
But anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Is I'm just, you know, wondering why my taxes are so high and when they were supposed to raise them, I guess to 15% and ours is 25 or a little bit older. I don't have the paperwork with me right now, but yeah, and I just want to know why. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, public hearing. Public hearing exceeding of the revenue, revenue neutral rate. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, move to motion, or move to open the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay. So staff presentation.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Commissioner, Kansas statutes establish as notice and public hearing requirements for certain taxing subdivisions seeking to collect property taxes in excess of the subdivision's revenue neutral rate. A taxing subdivision is prohibited from levying taxes exceeding its revenue neutral rate without first approving a resolution or ordinance in accordance with the procedure provided by the bill. As presented during the 2023 budget process, the city of Leavenworth intends to reduce its overall mill levy by one mil, yet will exceed the revenue neutral rate as defined in statute. The required resolution is before the public for discussion and the city commission for consideration.
Okay, now we'll go on to citizen comments. So who, just raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Overby, you want to state your name and address, please. You've got two to three minutes.
Gerard Overby, 4108 Grand Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen and a taxpayer. My bottom line is that I ask you to consider suspending the city tax increase for this year on the property tax and return to a revenue neutral balance sheet. This is not a prudent time to raise taxes for the following six reasons. Most, if not all, citizens are encountering economic hardship in the form of recession, high taxes, high prices on fuel, goods and services, and food when the shelves are not empty. Number two, a lot of citizens in the community own or unfixed income and are placed in a position making life-altering decisions to keep the house or put food on the table. We spend, number three, we spend an incredible amount of energy and resources getting people into homes in the effort to stem the cycle of poverty and homelessness here in our community. This process of raising property tax is antithetical to this effort and pushes more people out into the streets. The Leavenworth School Board, USD 453, just last night voted not to raise the property tax, and I would, I would propose that the city follow suit. Property ownership is sacrosanct. Only about 17% to 21% of the city's revenue comes from property tax, and that can be lowered, if not eliminated altogether. We expect citizens of our great city to tighten their belts during this hard economic time. We expect the city, with a significant reserve fund, to do the same and look for ways to tighten those expenditures. The city also has access to the American Rescue Plan Act funds to use in multiple ways. Once again, I ask that each one of you consider the situations I have outlined and be prudent in your decision not to raise property tax on the people of this great city during these hard economic times. And I know what you're thinking. You're thinking, Mr. Overby, we did our jobs, we looked at every penny and came to the conclusion that we can drop the mill levy by one point, reducing the tax burden on the citizens. But when you go from 26 to 31 and then drop it by one point, there's still an increase of four points, and that, my friends, is a tax increase. So once again, I ask each one of you to consider the situations I've outlined and be prudent in your decision not to raise property taxes on the people of this city during these hard economic times. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Overby. Okay, and who wants to go next? Buddy? Mr. Klibb?
I want something for the city manager, and I know he wants it.
Okay, okay.
I gave something to the county administrator the other day. I have about 40 boxes that I was clearing out since 1938. Of course, I wasn't doing much in 1938. It wasn't long after that, when the lights come on again, that's World War II, in case anybody doesn't know. Now you just got to sit with the girl, go swap her grandpa on, listen to the lights come on.
What I just handed out was, what have we learned in 2064 years? The budget should be balanced, the treasury should be refilled, the public debt should be reduced, the arrogance of officialdom should be tempered and controlled, and the assistance to public land should be curtailed, lest Rome become bankrupt. People must again learn to work instead of living on public assistance. That was Cicero in 55 B.C. And I know that doesn't mean anything today, because without the past, there is no future. Required resolution before you, to me, is a resolution that the legislature has allowed you because so many, not you personally, all the cities. Oh my God, you're taking away our ability to get into some of this free money by the taxes going up. The average tax went up in Leavenworth County, property tax, 15%. Now, I think you only went up 11-point-something percent, but it's a shame that anytime there's money, entities will find out how to get it. It's a total shame. I was a little worried. The first budget I pulled up was, I think, 369 or 396 pages, and I finally figured out that was Paul's sheet that he handed, or sheets that he handed out to you, and I said, how am I going to go through all that? I said, I don't have the time. But when I pulled it up the other day, there were only something like 20-some sheets. But it was rather interesting to see the process that you had gone through, and I'm going to finish what I got to say on the next episode. And it is really a shame that we just constantly, and as I say, I could go on for hours. I mean, you talk about stuff that I had written down that needed to be talked about, stormwater, you know? We're already taxing for stormwater, and now we're moving some money into stormwater. I don't understand it. So I agree with the gentleman. I would hope that you would reconsider. You're only lowering it one mil. You know, my biggest competitor here in Leavenworth, Kansas, it's county and city government, followed by the federal government, then by the state government. Two of my one-month profits, and you only have 12 a year, automatically go to property tax. And I can go on down where there's just about two left, and I've been in business for 30-some years. Oh.
I'm going to break that, you did.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Paul. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I know, last time he didn't break it. Okay, who wants to go next? Anyone want to go next?
My name is Steve Clay. I live at 307 North Broadway here in Leavenworth. And first off, I'd like to start off by commending Mr. Overby in your presentation, because he hit the nail on the head, as far as I'm concerned, and I think for many of the citizens of this, this city. I have here in my hand an interesting little graph that was sent to me, and it's data from the Kansas Department of Revenue and Bureau of Labor Statistics. And I'd like to share this with everybody here, because I suspect most of you here are here for the taxes, as I am. Over the past 24 years, and this goes from 97 to 2021, the population of Leavenworth has increased by 16%. Yet inflation, the cost of living, has gone up by 61%. Property taxes have gone up 292%. Okay, so we've had a moderate, I wouldn't even call it moderate, increase in population, which means there's not a whole lot of new construction going on, you know, new roads and that sort of thing you need to do. There's some, but not a whole lot. And yet, five times the rate of inflation we're paying in taxes today than we were 24 years ago. And so my question is, where the hell is all that money going? What are we spending it on? And so I would ask the city council to think about that. I think you owe the citizens of this, this city some answers on where this money goes and why we need so much more, even though the population growth hasn't gone up very high at all. I mean, five times the rate of inflation is what we're collecting now. So I know I'm not going to get an answer tonight, but I think you need to think about it before you vote, and I would, like others, I would heartily recommend that you vote neutral, I mean, no increase at all. I mean, we're, we're, we're suffering, not me so much, but another lot of people that live around me are suffering from, from the inflation problems, and they're having a hard time. They're paying taxes too, because they're all in houses so far. So I thank you for hearing my, my words tonight, and I'll step down.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Okay, anyone else? Oh, sure, come on up. Mr. Bauer? Just need your name and address, please.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, city staff, let me say I am thrilled beyond measure to see this many people here for a budget hearing. My time on the city commission, we might have had two or three people, maybe Mr. Klibb would come. So I'm happy to see everybody here tonight. I'm here to speak to the budget. I spent some time last night reviewing it. I guess I was insomniac. I don't know what possessed me to do that, but I spent a lot of time going through it. And I want to thank the Commission for lowering the mill levy. One mil is significant. I also want to thank the Commission for holding the line and not raising the sewer or the garbage fund. Those are significant, and I'm happy to see that happen. So I'm here to thank you for your diligent effort. I know how much time and effort it takes to go through a budget process, and I'm here to support you on your decision to raise the mill, or to, to lower the mill levy and keep the sewer flat, keep the trash flat. I support moving forward with this budget, even though it exceeds the revenue neutral. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay. Anyone else? Sure, come on up. Just to name an address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Name is Hike Welling, 2133 Burke Street, Leavenworth, Kansas. And the bottom line is, we have a spending problem, not a taxation problem, and it ties into that. I'd like to thank Mr. Overby for his comments. Totally agree with everything he said. Couldn't have said it better myself. But I've lived in a lot of places across the world, been in the Army for 26 years. This county is one of the, number one, on increase on property assessment and property tax, I've been here seven years, and I've never seen my property tax as so high as in this county. And I just ask for you to reconsider. The biggest thing right now is, it's a moral issue and it's an ethical issue. You've got people suffering in a high-inflation environment post-COVID, and this is not the time till the 11 these taxes to support your budget. And I ask you to consider that in your final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, I just need a motion. Do I close the public hearing and then we?
The Commission comments.
Okay.
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, so no further citizen comments. I need a motion to close citizen comments.
Move to someone.
Okay, okay. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, now we will go through if each Commissioner has something to say, and I think you have your, I'll let Commissioner Martin start first.
All right. Well, again, good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow commissioners. Good evening, everyone, too. Appreciate all the fun we had tonight. Definitely, you know, there's been, over the last few weeks since we've been talking about the budget and what it's going to look like, our economy today, the uncertainty that we have, you know, in the, the next year and the following years, we just, we just really don't know what's going to happen. We don't know how we're going to have to budget for different projects. We've seen our own projects go up 30, 40% from original estimates. Nobody's fault in the city at all. It's just, that's just the way it is right now in our economy. So I know, you know, when we first had, back in July 15, first had some discussions about what the budget was going to look like, I think there were, you know, and I do want to commend my fellow city team members and Roberta for everything that was put together. I think a lot of work went into that. You know, I think what's on our minds right now is, you know, what's our outlook going to look like every year? I know in talking with folks last year and hearing from a lot of different people this year, we, we don't want to see, you know, our taxes go up next year. And some of the comments have been, well, you know, we can only control what's here in the city. And I totally agree. We can only control what we can control here. Couple of questions, though, that have come up. It's like, how can we avoid exceeding the revenue neutral rate with the proposed 2023 budget as it is today? And I would say probably the better, better state is, how can we make it to where we will not increase the city's portion of property taxes for our citizens in 2023? I know we talk about mill levy, and it gets confusing, and it just, it gets confusing. How do we make it so that we are not increasing the tax burden on our citizens today, going into 2023? So a few things I want to lay out, just going to walk through. I know there've been a lot of questions and concerns. How, what could the path forward be if we wanted to do this? And right now, just to validate this, this is the target number we would have to eliminate out of our budget today. It's the ad valorem tax for 2023, including the one-mil decrease. Is that correct, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, that's, that's about right.
Okay, okay. So, so we got this target number, and, you know, just thinking about it more and more, like, what does this look like? I know some of the concerns were, we, there could be a potential impact to our city employees. We, I could not agree more that we do not want to impact our city employees. They work hard, they work in overtime. We don't want to impact them. But that is a concern. How can we do this to not impact them? Second concern, what about the length of time it would take to do a deep-dive analysis into the operating budget? We've talked about that as well. But if we had to go line through, you know, line by line, and, you know, Commissioner Hainel, I know you've mentioned that, you know, that would take a long time to do that. So those are a couple of concerns there. And also, what about the timing for the final budget approval? What does that look like? So I want to address these tonight, just again, create the discussion and the path forward with how we could potentially achieve the revenue neutral rate, how we could actually make it so where we are not increasing our citizens' taxes, at least on the city's portion, in 2023. And then also, maybe any potential challenges, roadblocks that could come with these paths, and I would welcome Mr. Kramer's input on that as well. So one option would be, and I think Mr. Overby used this earlier, use of our funds to cover one-time CIP expenses. You know, we look at the operating budget, we look at CIP. Two dynamic environments right there. So is there a way we could actually cover some of the one-time projects? These are not the projects that extend into 2024, 2025. Can we possibly use those funds to cover, again, that $600,000 number? I did some quick math on some of these projects. We have about 55 out there right now, not all would be getting into next year. There's about 22 that actually would have some impact next year, and there's a variety of them that we could actually cover with a one-time expense. That's option one. Option two, the use of reserve funds to cover one-time CIP expenses. Mr. Kramer, do you remember the exact number for our reserves today?
6.4 million, roughly.
And, and I should know this number. The rate we're generating into replenishment of reserve funds is?
That, that varies wildly year to year. We won't know till the end.
We're, we're current, only budgeting to spend, to spend down the reserves this year. But as far as replenishment goes?
It just depends on the year. Yeah, forecast, how revenue comes in.
It could be $200,000.
It could be. You're right, yes.
Third option, could be we come out and remove the one-time CIP expenses for 2023 and keep those funds for the operating budget. Again, that $600,000 number. There are about, let's see, maybe eight to 11 that we could look at, potentially removing, reevaluating, possibly eliminating or moving to another year. I wouldn't actually personally recommend that, but these are the three options that we could look at right now. And with that, we will not impact our city employees, especially we will not impact a new plan drawn.
Is he speaking as a?
Commissioner.
Where is that on here?
Well, I close the citizen comments, so, so, yeah.
I'm turning down to.
Now, we're, we're each going to call.
Yeah, forecast, how revenue comes in.
It could be a few hundred thousand.
It could be, you're right, yes.
Third option could be we come out and remove the one-time CIP expenses for 2023 and keep those funds for the operating budget. Again, that $600,000 number. There are about, let's see, maybe eight to 11 that we could look at, potentially removing, reevaluating, possibly eliminating or moving to another year. I wouldn't actually personally recommend that. But these are the three options that we could look at right now. And with that, we will not impact our city employees, especially we will not impact the new plan German.
Is she speaking as a?
Commissioner.
Where is that on here?
Well, I close the citizen comments, so, so yeah.
I'm turning down to.
We're, we're each going to comment and then vote, and then vote.
So this will not, I think, Mr. Clem, this will not impact our city employees. This will not, I know, Mr. Wilson, we, we discussed, how about the police department, fire department, what about, you know, their salaries and the news plans out there? This would not impact that either. The length of time it would take to do a deep dive analysis, this would eliminate that. This, this, we would not need to recover these capital expenditures. We wouldn't have to go through line by line and restore everything out. Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Question, Paul, are we able to use the ARPA funds to cover CIP expenses? It's the question, the first one I asked.
Well, I want to make sure I get it right. So when he's talking about CIP, you're talking about, could you, say, take eight, eight or 10 projects, and could you essentially take those funds, move to the operating, and then take ARPA funds to then pay for those CIP funds?
Correct.
Yes.
There's a catch-all exception for ARPA that I believe the city falls within that basically allows it to be considered lost revenue during the COVID period. I think the dollar amount was up to $10 million.
We elected that option.
And, yeah, the city elected that option to treat that as. So that you did have to fill out all the forms to go through every single type of analysis of whether something was eligible or not. The Treasury regulations adopted a catch-all provision that if you, if you got less than a certain amount, you could automatically deem that to be lost revenue and put that in your general funds.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing is timing for the final budget approval. Mr. Kramer, I know we talked a little bit about this, and I want to make sure I got this right. The deadline to submit our final budget to the state of Kansas is September 25th, 2022.
Am I correct, Sarah? What's the?
We have to have the budget due the 20th of September.
20th of September. Twenty, okay. So five more days, yeah.
Okay, okay. And so, you know, talking about the path forward and timing and everything, I know that's a concern. It's like, hey, how do you, you know, not a lot of time. Again, what I've laid out, I don't believe actually would take a lot of time because we're talking about a different approach to this. You know, Mr. Kramer, could you walk us through the process? If, if we were to do something different tonight and vote revenue neutral, what that could look like for, you walk me through that process. Could you walk that through for the, our public?
Sure, it's the same process that brought us here tonight. It's, there's a notification period, so the city has to publish a notification of revenue neutral rate of the public hearing. And then so, following that, we'd have to wait till that is published in the paper. And then there's X number of days till you can then hold the public hearing. And then we would essentially replicate the process that we're doing tonight.
Okay, can you map out what that looks like?
Well, the revenue neutral rate hearing has to be held between August 20th and September 20th. And then there are periods below that, before that. I mean, what you would, I mean, again, I'm just throwing options out there. If you, what you have adopted tonight was a resolution calling for this, you could refuse to exceed the revenue neutral rate tonight. At no point could you then, in the future, exceed the amount of the thing. And you could then maybe perhaps reschedule your budget hearing at a, at a separate time.
Right, you'd still have to go through the notification and application. So the timing wouldn't change.
Right, so you don't, you would not need to do another revenue neutral rate hearing if you were not to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
But you'd still have to do the budget.
Yes, but you still have to, yeah.
So if we were, thank you, Mr. Waters. So if we were to vote to not exceed and with the intention being to amend, we were then still a good timeframe that this could happen where we could hit the Kansas State deadline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, I know when, when Mr. Kramer and I talked about what, how this could impact 2024's budget, what would that look like? What if we do this now? What's that going to mean for future budgets? Could you kind of walk through some of the challenges that come with that?
So I, we did talk just a couple hours ago. I, I don't think I can do a fair justice of all the impacts, you know, the 2024. By cutting your property tax rate, then you're creating an annual hole. So one year is ARPA, but then what's the following year and the following year? And again, as expenses increase and your revenue holds the line, that number grows. 608,000, 630,000, and it grows as expenses. But to do an actual discussion with my finance director and get what, what are the other implications, I would need more time.
Okay, so to maybe summarize, we have, again, that $600,000 pocket that if we didn't fill that this time, say with the CIP funds, we, we would be lacking that in 2024. And we, we wouldn't have that to be able to use. We have to either pull that money from our complete operating budget, or we have to split the difference. We have to pull maybe half of that amount from our operating budget. Or we could continue to use reserve funds as emergency needs come up for capital expense to their eyes. Is that correct?
It's a really complex question and, and, you know, yeah. You know, each year brings different challenges, so you don't know. But in theory, that's, that's roughly correct.
Okay, so I get it. Thank you for that. I'm sorry, thank you for that, Mr. Kramer. So I think, you know, some of my thoughts to my fellow commissioners here, you know, this is not a fun process to have to take money out, maybe that's been allocated. And again, we don't know what 2024 is going to look like. We don't know what 2025 is going to look like. This is not going to feel good at all. But at some point, we have to pull the lever to say, this is the year we're going to start. It's going to make a challenge for us next year. We're going to be more in the hot seat. That's why we're in those seats, to make those decisions for our citizens or our, our city team members as well. We've got to do both. We have to do both. I believe we have a way to accomplish that through these options I've laid out. I'd like to ask if any of my fellow commissioners have any questions to this point?
No, I don't.
You made it, I think, pretty clear. We could use, if we so chose, reserve funds to account, to cover the 608,000.
I want to make it clear that there are, to accomplish reaching revenue neutral, there are dozens of ways.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying that's the only.
Cut, moving revenue, not doing capital projects, taking from reserves, reallocating. I mean, there are literally dozens of ways. So to comment on one makes it sound like that, that that's the only way. I mean, there's always ways to, to amend the budget. So I want to be clear with that. Sure.
Commissioner Hengel, one to mention, too. We know that we probably have to do more detailed looks and thorough looks next year. However, we, we, Mr. Kramer and I have been talking about a plan with that, too, to start the budget process even earlier, to give us more time to meet with our department heads, department leaders, and kind of talk through some of that. So actually, this, these potential plans that I've laid out, we, again, ensure that we're not going to impact our city employees for next year. It's going to take out a lot of time out of the process. And like Mr. Kramer said, we would still be able to hit the budget deadline submission for the state of Kansas. So any, any other questions that are concerns or why, maybe anybody, why you might not think this would be a good idea? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, my biggest concern is if we do it this year, then what are we going to do next year? Because we're going to be back at square one. And there's so many projects we're trying to accomplish to move the city forward in the direction that we're, that we're, you know, anticipating for the growth and the impact we're going to have on the citizens overall.
Absolutely, so our, our employees, again, are, are still covered. Our citizens will be taken care of for next year. That $600,000 number, however we want to do it, if we could take some out of the operating budget, you know, that can help as well. That number could be lowered. That's the max right now that we're faced with today. So we have a void we would need to work towards, but we're going to have a whole lot more time to work towards that. And again, we can talk about how are we going to be impacted five, 10, 20 years down the road? You know, in this economy, we're almost living day by day. And in our city, we, we, we can, we can knock out one year at a time. Again, I would like to think that with the creativity that we have, all the different experiences and, and Mr. Kramer leading the way with his team, that we can accomplish our objective next year, to hit that number. We know about it right now. We know what that is. We're not going blind. It's only obvious.
The other consideration you need to think about is the mill doesn't just fund the general fund, it funds our city debt. And so our ability to borrow and the interest cost chewed up by that is a consideration. And I only bring that up not to dissuade or to be counters, that it is more complex than just that out of the general fund. Bond and interest are payments that the city has no choice on. We can't reduce our bond and interest. This money we borrowed, it's principal and interest we owe to the private sector. And that is a dedicated, well over a quarter of our property tax revenue pays for money that we have already borrowed.
But again, we have to do more.
Right, I just wanted to throw that out there, that, that there are, there are a lot of different things that they go into the property taxes.
Madam Mayor, any, any questions you might have on this that, that, is there any reason why this would not work, in your opinion? Is there anything maybe that I've not covered in this?
Actually, at this time, I don't really have any comment. I'm going to wait to comment, because they sort of go hand in hand when we go to the budget.
I have some comments.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Bowder.
Yeah, I was waiting for you to call on me, but I guess now is good as. Now is good as any time since we've heard this. My thought is that we look more closely at it earlier next year and, and look at, look at that. I mean, if we'd have looked at this earlier this year, we wouldn't be in this situation now. But the problem that I have with my property taxes is the fact that they've gone up by $70,000 over the last two years. And the way the state appraises or requires the county to appraise our taxes makes it so that we all have to pay a lot more in taxes. But as far as our budget goes, we went through that every, every line item. And I think for this year, we ought to go ahead and go with what we've got and start earlier next year to, to look at ways to, to change our budget or make it more streamlined than we already have. So that, those are my comments. I, I would just like to move on with what we, what we have put together. We've spent a lot of time on it. We've worked hard on it. And, and I think that if we could get the state to change the way we do these stupid appraisals, we wouldn't have to be paying so damn much taxes. So that's my comment.
Commissioner Bowder, I appreciate that. And I, I want to say, I absolutely believe that the state issue and how those property taxes are evaluated and assessed, that's, that is, that's a completely different deal altogether. But I, I do think they need to, they need to take a hard look at that. I'm hoping they do that in the months ahead. Is there anything that I laid out for you, Commissioner Bowder, that would not work, though, in, in your mind, out of the three options I put out there for you?
I'm, I'm not interested in looking at your options right now, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Hengel.
I agree with you. You know, in this day and age, with the way the economy is, inflation going like crazy, I think it's time, we do need to tighten our belts, look at what are the things we need? Okay? Things that the city stops running as the city in providing services to the citizens and providing goods and keeping the, the employees well-paid and, and, and well-taken care of. I think we need to look at the needs, then look at the wants. There are a few things, I was going through the budget, and there are a few things that I question. You know, is the city going to stop running if we don't have this?
With this plan, no. We will not affect wages. We will not affect.
Exactly.
Any services, not with these options.
Yeah, but there, you know, and personnel and wages and such aside, there are, there are things, I think, in here that we would like to have. We really, really want them. But if they cost that much, can we afford them?
Commissioner Ralph Wilson again, asking.
Well, I know we've been talking for a while, especially today. And I expressed to you my biggest concern was the impact on the city employees, because I know we want to make sure that we have a competitive salary, so we can compete with the surrounding communities. You know, we definitely want to make sure that we're able to hire great quality workers for law enforcement and also the fire department. And, I mean, and I'm going to be honest with you. I was looking at it one way, but you're providing a different option, it's giving me a different perspective and.
I believe we can win. I just hope we can.
I just.
Yeah, and so I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm really, yeah.
With that, sorry, Mr. Wilson.
Well, because I've expressed to you my biggest concern, and you're saying with this change that we implement, it's not going to impact our city employees and we can't use the ARPA funding to still be able to move forward with the CIP expenses, correct? And that's.
For this year.
For this year.
And then you have to keep going on and on.
But these are one-time expenses, so they won't be there the next year. That's what's great about this particular.
Well.
It does set the new revenue neutral rate.
Sets the new, right.
So I, I don't think it's, I think it's fair to say that you can use ARPA to replace CIP, to replace property tax, but it's not accurate to say that it's one time because the, the shortfall then is in perpetuity unless you raise back up.
So see, so see, it's going to do that.
So you're correct on one side, but I don't think quite accurate on the other.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that.
So again, we've got that, that, that.
Yeah, and so just being honest with you, man, great idea, and I definitely love it. But I don't want to, you know, we cut today and we're raising tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's, that's my biggest concern.
So we've, we've got a gap. Mr. Kramer, you know, how could that look though? When we got that, again, that $600,000 number we're talking about, again, from a planning perspective, what could it mean, you know, potentially for us? How, how would we fill that gap? Because I think that is the biggest concern right now, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Yeah, all due respect, I don't feel comfortable with it. I mean, this is really, I'm going to be honest, this is really on the spot. I mean, I, I have no time to analyze this thing through, talk with my team. You know, I would not be giving the commission or you a full and thought-out response if I, if I answer these questions literally as they come up in this room.
And I understand, I understand that.
It wouldn't be professional of me to do that.
No, and I agree. And, go ahead.
So not having an answer of what we're going to do tomorrow, that's why I'm in favor of moving forward with the revenue neutral rate.
Exceeds.
Last question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
No, and I agree, maybe next year, you know, the timing for the final budget, you know, maybe if we can get it a little earlier. Now, mind you, I said in previous, you know, it came out on a Friday, and that's when I got it, for the following Friday. Now, I know that you didn't pick yours up until two days before. And I know you have a full-time job, which most of us do. And, but, so, yeah, I, still, it is a thick book, and I've been through it a couple of times, this process. So I would still agree with that. But I think we need to move forward. And, yeah, I worry about that. You know, I look forward. I can't look for, okay, this will work right now. And then in a couple of years, then it's going to be, oh, now, then I'm going to have probably double the people going.
We'll have to change our thinking next year or the next year or this year.
When you don't know what's going to happen.
And Madam Mayor, I hear you right, too, and I'll, and I'll move on. But if, if we can take more time next year to come through and maybe remove that $600,000 out of it, that would be great to be able to do that. Is that right?
Well, I mean, that's something I'm, I'm for moving forward with what we have now with this budget and approval to exceed the revenue neutral rate at this year.
Spend more time next year going through the process.
Could.
Again, that's what this plan lays out. We don't think about that this year.
And that's, and that's your opinion? And, and then you get, you know, from the other fellow commissioners as well. But I want other people to be able to talk, commissioners as well.
And, and again, I also want to say I do appreciate the, and I applaud the school district for making the decision they made last night to, to vote not to exceed the revenue neutral rate. I would like to make a motion and move that we do not exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2023 budget and amend.
Second.
Okay.
So it's a motion, second.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Okay, so you're doing, you want to, approval to exceed revenue.
As I motion for my motion.
The motion on the floor is to not exceed.
Not exceed.
Right.
Okay, and you second it. And so begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Oh, Commissioner Bowder?
No.
Commissioner Hengel.
Aye.
No.
No.
You still have a resolution in front of you.
Oh, okay. So now I just need to consider Resolution B 2317, approval to exceed revenue neutral rate. Oh, I need a roll call now. Roll call, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
England?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Okay, next up, public hearing on 2023 operating and 2023 dash 2027 capital budgets.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, uh, I guess, I guess you should open the public hearing first.
I know, I was gonna say, open the public hearing, I need a motion.
So move.
Second? Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, uh, begin with Commissioner Martin.
Open it, aye.
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 Commissioner Bowder?
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, there you go.
Okay.
Mr. Kramer.
Uh, Madam Mayor and Commissioner, Kansas statute requires the city commission hold a budget, or a public hearing prior to the consideration and adoption of the 2023 city budget. Along with consideration and the adoption of the 2023 budget, the commission will consider a resolution to approve the 2023 housing budget and specifically Planters Two operating budgets. Those are HUD functions or HUD-funded operations. The 2023 transmittal letter that was attached to the packet does include a summary of the 2023 operating and 2027 capital budgets. Both documents have been available in draft form in the public since mid-July on the city's website and through hard copies at City Hall and the public library, and they were discussed at the July 15th city commission budget hearings. The action before the commission is to consider two things, the adoption of the 2023 operating and capital budgets, as well as the resolution related to the Leavenworth Public Housing Authority.
Okay, so you did your staff presentation. Okay, so it's, uh, citizen comments, do we have anyone? Okay, let's, uh, start with Mr. Clamp.
I just wondered if you didn't call me out for not giving my name and address.
Well, I need you to give your name and address now.
Thank you. I think we all know.
We, we know you, but...
I'm Louis Clamp or Louis Clamp, uh, live at 1816 Pine Ridge Drive, Leavenworth, Kansas. Okay, let's talk fast. Uh, no one out here knows what's gonna happen. You know, they don't know about tomorrow, they don't know about the next day. We don't worry about those kind of things. Uh, about twenty, thirty years ago, when Dan Williamson was here, a bunch of us talked about, uh, what we were going to do and we'd be able to pay our debt, and then we would pay as we go. That was on your first page, pay as we go. That's an interesting concept. Now, the concept is we are fifty percent untaxable. We're talking about, and I don't want to tax God, I don't mind taxing the churches, but I don't want to tax God because he'll get even. So as we go on down the line, I'm gonna pull out some hot items, which were totally hot to me, you know, uh, okay, uh, the general fund has a reserve of six million eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-two, which is thirty-one point seven percent, and that's in the, uh, uh, gentleman, Paul's, uh, letter, and the city's reserve target is sixteen point six seven, so it's almost, you know, it was fifteen, uh, percent higher. So you got way too much reserve. Why don't we lower the reserve a little bit? I don't have that much in a storage box, uh, I don't have that much in the house. So, uh, and, uh, the library, it says the library is, I don't know, three point nine five, but they have nine point six six. That was added later in their life, I guess, so brought them to four point four eight three, when they should, in my mind, should be at three point nine five, not at four point four eight three. General fund, nothing on that to speak of, I could speak for hours on it, but, uh, I hear that clock ticking, it's in the back of my mind. Uh, what did, uh, I shouldn't say Cousin Joe, but what did he give us? He gave us over eight million dollars. Now, that was after you had already budgeted. Everybody had budgeted. Two times in this letter, it talks about the virus, and that's called the Chinese Communist Virus. It's not called anything else, cause where did the swine flu come from? Where did the bird flu come from? Came from not she, uh, somebody else before she, and it's, so, uh, but I think it's interesting. And then the refuge fund is budgeted to finish 2023 with a hundred and forty-two day reserve. How much is that in money? Doesn't say how much in money. Uh, to get the general fund, you budgeted, uh, or to get to the, uh, twenty-five, there we go, I knew it would come about, but A, A, R, P, A, you got eight million seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars after you had already budgeted. Now, that is amazing, to get that much money from Uncle Sam after you had already budgeted for your full budget. So you need to not increase it at all.
Thank you, Mr. Clamp. Mr. Bauer. State your name and address.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Ken Bauer, one zero two nine Third Avenue, the fine city of Leavenworth. I want to congratulate, uh, the commission and the staff on a budget that I think is reasonable. Again, I thank you for dropping the mill levy, one mil, that's significant. I thank you again for holding the line on the sewer and garbage funds so that we don't pay those additional monies for those funds. Those, in my, in my recollection, I don't think we've ever done that before, I could be wrong, but I think we've always increased slightly those two funds, the garbage and the sewer. So thank you for holding line on that. That will be helpful to our citizens. I also want to thank you for the work that you're doing for our fire department. Our fire department, I see our chief is here tonight, we've lax sorely, we've worked hard, I know, for police, but fire department's kind of fallen a little bit behind. This budget will help the fire department immensely, so I congratulate you on that expenditure. And I thank you again for opening the public comments, uh, I think you're doing a, a great job with this budget, and I encourage you to continue forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Mr. Overby. Yes?
Gerard Overby, four one zero eight Granite Avenue. And I just want to, uh, remind the city commission that, um, your number one concern should be the people of Leavenworth, uh, the city of Leavenworth, and not your first concern over whether you can meet the budget for your administration, um, and your fire department and police. And I recognize that they are an important part of our city, but your number one priority coming out of your mouth should be the people of the city of Leavenworth. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, uh, I need a motion to close the public hearing, and then we can comment after that.
So move.
Second.
Okay, begin voting, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, any comments before the, a motion before?
A quick question for Paul. Uh, with the mill reduction, how much would the city be giving back, uh, to the citizens and the community?
About two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is about what one mil equals.
Okay, and with the, with us freezing garbage and sewer rates, do you have the numbers on that?
Yeah, usually, as, uh, Mr. Bauer indicated, usually utility, standard utility rate increases are between three and six percent, so depending on, uh, refuse is a standard rate across the board, so three to six percent off that, and then your sewer rate fluctuates on water use, so whatever you have, it's usually between three and six percent on that, that's a pretty good industry average on utility rates.
Okay.
You're gonna probably pay more in your, uh, electric and gas utilities, but as far as municipal utilities, that's about average.
Okay, yeah, and I just want to thank the commission for, uh, you know, reducing the mill by one mil and giving back two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the citizens and also, uh, freezing the garbage and sewer rate. I truly believe that is, uh, the city commission's way of giving back and serving the citizens and also providing great quality firefighters who's gonna be serving inside of our community and providing great services, uh, that's gonna help benefit the citizens overall in our community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bowder, did you have anything to say?
No, I'm just ready to make a motion.
Okay, well, wait, I, I have something to say, but I wanted to check.
Somebody else, somebody else can make a motion, I don't care, I don't have anything else.
Okay, Commissioner England, did you want to make any comment?
No, I'm, I'm glad that we reduced the mill at least one, you know, and that we froze. I'm, uh, but I, I still think there's other things in there that are needed, or that are not needed.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just want to point out, um, and I know we'll probably be talking about this more in, in the weeks ahead, uh, looking at one line item, our, uh, the, the trash bags that the city, uh, pays for annually, right now it's about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we, uh, spend on the black trash bags, and I think right now, uh, we, we bring in about twenty thousand dollars, uh, on the sale of trash bags. Um, just doing some quick math, looking at the seven hundred, or the ten thousand seven fifty-seven, uh, residents that are actually paying for refuse service right now, if we did eliminate that line, we could actually, on average, uh, lower our refuse line by about eleven percent, just FYI.
Okay, yeah, and we'll still be doing more with that since we had the, uh, citizen task force the other day, so, thank you. Okay, my turn. Okay, uh, I'm proud of the work done on the 2023 city budget by the commission and staff, and I will be voting to approve. The reason I am voting for this budget is that it considers both the present and the future. I am voting for this budget because it makes a long overdue commitment to our fire department, a commitment that says your contribution to the overall health of our community should be reflected in compensation, equipment, and training. I am voting for this budget because it makes a significant commitment to our infrastructure. The budget invests more than four point five million in roads, it expands investments in trails, sidewalks, and our sewer system. I am voting for this budget because it seeks to provide high-quality services and the recreational amenities that our residents deserve, and amenities that lead to the city continuing to attract new businesses and housing. I am voting for this budget because it works to strengthen the city's ability to recruit and retain talented people. After having gone through three budget cycles at this point, I can say that each one is unique and presents a combination of challenges. This year, the city, just like our businesses and residents, has been affected by the post-pandemic economy, labor shortages, and labor competition, record inflation, rising interest rates, supply chain disruptions, a volatile bidding environment, and more. I am proud that this budget considers the challenges I just stated and still lowers the mill levy one full mil and freezes both wastewater and refuse, refuse rates. Government budgets are not often popular, but I was elected to make decisions, I believe, are in the best interest of sustaining growth and progress for the city of Leavenworth. I support this budget because I believe it attempts to help our businesses and our families while still taking actions that move us forward. And with that being said, um, I, Kamala Leonhard, uh, make a motion to approve, okay, the 2023 operating and 2023 dash 2027 capital budgets.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner England?
No.
Aye?
No.
Okay.
And then the housing resolution.
Okay, consider Resolution B-2318, approval of 2023 housing budget for Planters Two. And I just need a motion.
Oh, so move.
Uh, second?
Aye, a second.
Okay. Begin voting, Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner England?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, next up, mayor's appointments. I, Mayor Leonhard, move to appoint to the Community Development Advisory Board, Mary Mack, to a term ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Appoint to the Leavenworth Main Street Board, Meredith Thompson, to a term ending August fifteenth, two, two thousand twenty-five. Just need a second.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next up, employee benefit plan renewal.
It's being handled by Lana Lantner, our human resources director.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, presented for your review and approval this evening is the recommendation for employee benefit coverages to be renewed with our new plan year effective December one of 2022, going through November thirtieth of 2023. Uh, we did do renewals with our current providers based on the initial renewals that came in with no plan design changes. We are proceeding with the recommendation to renew with our current provider for medical, which is United Healthcare. They also cover our vision coverage and our renewal with Delta Dental for our dental coverage. Uh, medical came in with a six percent renewal, again, with no plan design changes, no changes to the current coverages in place, or any kind of interruption to the provider network. The dental coverage came in with a five percent increase, and just as a highlight, this is our second increase in the last five years with Delta, so a little overdue, but, uh, five percent increase with Delta Dental and a flat renewal for vision, which this is our second year of a three-year rate guarantee for the vision plan coverage. Uh, all of the renewals, again, will take effect December first. If they are approved this evening, we will proceed with open enrollment meetings for our employees. Will require any changes or additions only, so it will not require any positive enrollment for all employees to go through and make changes to the plan.
Madam Mayor, a couple of comments. Um, it's quite a feat, um, to come in at single digits, and that's a function of our HR department, um, our longstanding relationship with UHC. I, I challenge you to go to any other large entity, public or private, and, uh, see no plan design change and see single-digit increases. That's due to a strong employee council, uh, training, uh, OSHA training that we do, um, trainings in, in the workplace that we do, uh, the, the culture of safety, uh, throughout the department, so this is, this is, Lana is doing with the relationship with UHC, but this is really our department heads, uh, sending that message throughout their departments, um, to do things the right way. There's some things you can't avoid, but there's a lot of accidents you can, and I think a six percent increase and then a little bit, and five percent on Delta Dental shows, uh, the city's commitment, um, to trying to keep our rates at a reasonable level.
Just to tag team on that as well, is I do want to point out, we do have one of the richer plans that are offered by the employers and the city of Leavenworth. Uh, we do still have a ninety percent, ninety percent plan with a ten percent coinsurance. Uh, we do still have a two hundred and fifty-dollar deductible plan, which is very hard to find these days as well, so
You're right, you're right.
our plan limits on the Delta as well for dental coverage. We do not have annual maximums, which also is pretty unusual to find these days, so our plans that we have offered to our employees and kept in place without making significant changes to the plan design is, keeps us very rich in our benefits offerings to our employees.
And has been a key tool in, uh, a young police force, uh, and a young firefighting, uh, group that, uh, is in childbearing years, and so
My bet.
our, our insurance package has absolutely helped our ability to retain and recruit, uh, new employees as they look around the marketplace, uh, for the best package for them and their families going forward.
Did anyone have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Bowder?
You used to do this stuff, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
No, congratulations on keeping the numbers down. I know it's difficult with, uh, with health insurance especially.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I just need a motion then.
I'm, Madam Mayor, I move to approve that, uh, the city commission approved the recommendation for employee benefit coverage to be effective December first, 2022.
Second.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Lana.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Resolution B dash twenty-three nineteen, Camp Leavenworth Special Event Street Closure Request for Temporary Liquor License.
Should be our city clerk on this item?
Okay, hi. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, before you this evening for consideration is a resolution approving the special event known as Camp Leavenworth, which would close motor vehicle traffic to specific streets and allow for the possession and consumption of alcohol and liquor. The streets that will be closed were the same as last year, so that would be Cherokee between Second Street and South Esplanade, Chalk Town between Second and South Esplanade, and South Esplanade from Delaware to Three Mile Creek. By approving this resolution, this allows the city to request a temporary special event liquor license, and the alcohol-friendly area will be clearly marked and designated during the festival.
Okay, did anyone, anyone have any questions?
No.
To approve.
I just need a, just need a motion then.
Did we come up with a, a liquor vendor?
Yes.
Yes, we did, we have a local vendor, uh, John Ross at, off, uh, Twentieth Street will be the liquor vendor for Camp Leavenworth, so excited about that.
That's good to hear.
That's good, yeah. Okay, I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution B-2319, Camp Leavenworth Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution B 2319, Camp Leavenworth Special Event Street Closure Request for Temporary Liquor License.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Okay, next up. Bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider a ward of bid for Havens Park Trail Extension Project.
Madam Mayor, Commission, this item will be handled by Brian Bailey, the Parks Superintendent?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commission. Tonight I bring before you consideration for approval for the Havens Park Trail Extension Project. During the 2021 capital improvement budget process, the city discussed future development for the Leavenworth city and its trails. The commission dedicated $30,000 in the 2022 CIP for construction of the trails. At the March 15 meeting, study session meeting, staff presented options for trails for 2022. The commission came to consensus to extend the existing Havens Trails that are asphalt at that park. The city of Leavenworth solicited bids from firms for the Havens Park Trail Extension. Specifications and plan sheets were made available, and mandatory pre-bid was conducted. Bid openings were read aloud at 10:00 AM on August 16. There were two bids received, and only one met bid specifications. McCallum Associates' base bid for this project was $28,600 with $44 per linear foot for add alternate. The work for this project includes 650 feet of five-foot-wide asphalt trail per our specifications, which with the inclusion of the add alternate. The add alternate would be 31 more feet of trail added on to that 651 feet, or 650 feet. Work is expected to be completed 60 days after notice received after this is approved. So, staff recommends the base bid of the $28,600 and the add alternate, which would be 31 feet at $44 to equal $1,364 for a grand total for McCallum Associates at $29,964. There's $30,000 that's allocated for this project in the 2022 capital improvement program. Do you have any questions?
My fellow commissioners, you have any questions?
We addressed them before, no.
Any questions?
I'm good.
Okay. I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the bid award to McCallum Associates Corp. in the amount of $28,600 for the extension of the trail, not to exceed $29,964.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Okay, next up, first consideration ordinances. First consideration ordinance, special use permit, daycare, 3400 Iowa Street. We just need a consensus for this.
Sure, this will be Julie Hurley, Director of Planning and Community Development.
I do need it, not for this item, but.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I was like, oh yeah, good job, Griff.
It's no big deal.
I'm sorry.
It'll just take a second.
It didn't, it gives me time to pause. So, the TVs get turned on.
I think they're on, I can hear it.
Are you hot?
Maybe try.
The cooking chicken.
Oh, there we go. They probably fell asleep.
He's hot.
Listen, I don't think you can make those kinds of statements.
Oh, no.
I'm here for everybody.
Okay. So, as you said, this is a request for a special use permit for daycare located at 3400 Iowa Street. The property is zone R19, medium-density, single-family residential, and childcare centers are allowed in that district with the issuance of a special use permit. The applicants had previously had a special use permit approved in 2017 to operate a childcare center at 361 Shrine Park Road, and the family recently purchased this home at 3400 Iowa and is just intending to move their operation to their new home. The applicants are licensed by the state of Kansas to care for a maximum of 12 children in their home dependent on the ages of kids, and that maximum is pretty standard for a childcare license that's issued in the state. Planning Commission did consider this item at their August 1, 2022 meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the special use permit. And also on the agenda is an ordinance to rescind the special use permit located at 3611 Shrine Park Road, since pending the approval of this special use permit, their previous one would no longer be needed and would need to go out and get that rescinded. So, just a few conditions of determination for childcare centers. There are a few specific conditions that need to be met, so I'll just run through those for you. The first is that it should not be located along an arterial street. Iowa Street is classified as residential street, so that means that. The second is that they provide at least 100 square feet of open space per child, outdoors enclosed by a fence. This property has an enclosed backyard area of approximately 11,000 square feet, so they're well in excess of that requirement. The third is that they provide a loading zone that can accommodate at least two vehicles off-street. The driveway at this property can accommodate four vehicles, so they meet that requirement. The next is that they conform to all requirements of the state of Kansas and acquire a state of Kansas childcare license, and they have provided us a copy of their license from the state. The number five is that home childcare centers are the only legal residence of the operator. That is the case for this application. And then the sixth is that childcare centers in residential districts can have one non-illuminated sign up to three square feet, and so, of course, they would have to conform to that requirement should they elect to put up a sign on their property. So, those are the findings specific to childcare centers. We do have a few just general special use permit findings that I'll run through as well. The first is that the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of the ordinance. Staff does find that to be the case with this. The second is that the proposed special use at the location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, or convenience of the public. Staff does recognize that childcare centers do meet all of those requirements by providing a much-needed service to working parents in the community. The third is that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that it will in any way. And the fourth is that the location, size, and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved, or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. This will continue to look and function as residential house. There's no construction being proposed as part of it, so that is met as well. We did send notification to property owners within 200 feet, as is required by the state of Kansas, and we received no communication or objections from any neighboring property owners once we sent those notifications. So, staff would recommend approval of the special use permit with four criteria, that they maintain the 1,200 square feet of open space, 100% enclosed by a four-foot-high wall or fence, that they provide a permanent copy of their group daycare home license annually when it's renewed by the state, that the operation is limited to a maximum of 12 children, and that no other home occupations will be carried out at the residence. So, your options are to place an ordinance on first consideration or to deny the special use permit. And if you have any questions for me, I can answer those for you.
Oh, are the owners here?
I did not see them.
And the crap, I don't think so. Okay, okay, so we'll check in. Did any, did you have any question?
No.
Commissioner Bowder, did you have anything?
Nope, sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, then I just need a consensus.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay, and then we would also need a consensus to rescind the special use permit for the daycare at 3611 Shrine Park, and I believe that ordinance is also in your packet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, and this is for consensus, first consideration ordinance, rezone 2101 and 2013 Vilas Street. Oh, that's.
Okay, that's me again, yep. Okay. So, as you said, this is a request for a rezoning of the property located at 2101 Vilas and a portion of the property located at 2013 Vilas, from R125, low-density, single-family, to R19, medium-density, single-family residential. The property is, as you can see on the map, around the south side of Vilas, just to the west of Henry Leavenworth Elementary School. And the total size of the property included in this rezoning request is 4.54 acres. This request is being made in order to allow for the development of six single-family residential lots. All six of the proposed lots are approximately 3/4 of an acre in size with a width of 110 feet. Between 20th and 22nd Streets along that Vilas and Limit Loop there, as you all are familiar with, there are a total of 26 existing lots with frontage on either Vilas or Limit Street, or 22nd Street there at the end of the loop. Of those 26 lots, there are a total of 12 lots that are smaller than the proposed lots that are part of this proposed rezoning. The smallest lot on that loop is 0.35 acres. The Whispering Hills subdivision directly to the west, over in here, is developed to a single-family lots, and the average size of those lots is approximately 1/4 of an acre. And the Edgewood subdivision to the southeast of the proposed rezoning, just to the south of Henry Leavenworth, also includes single-family lots, and those are ranging in size from 0.17 acre to 0.38 acre. The Development Review Committee did look at this project at their May 12 meeting and discussed items related to improvements to Vilas, additional dedication of roadway, utilities, sidewalks, and stormwater. All of those issues addressed will be taken care of at the time of building permit, should this proposal move forward. The Planning Commission considered this item on August 1 and voted three to one to recommend denial of their zoning request. There were an associated preliminary and final plat included in that planning commission meeting, and the planning commission, after they took action on the rezoning, since they voted to recommend denial, they voted to table those plat requests pending consideration by the city commission, since if this rezoning request were to not ultimately move forward and be approved through ordinance, the plats would sort of be a moot point and could not move forward under the current zoning. At the August 1 Planning Commission meeting, we had a total of seven residents speak in opposition to the request. The minutes of that meeting were included in your packet and are pretty lengthy. Hopefully, maybe you got a chance to watch the recording of that meeting, give you a little better idea of what that discussion was. So, in considering rezonings, we have a number of conditions that we need to consider. They're called the Golden Criteria. Those are, those come directly from state statutes, so I will go through those for you now. The first is the character of the neighborhood. The property is vacant and is surrounded by single-family residential development. To the east is Henry Leavenworth Elementary School, and to the west is a traditional single-family residential neighborhood. The next is the zoning and use of properties nearby. I'm going to go ahead and turn on the zoning layer here, just so you can see it. Zoom out just a little bit. The immediately surrounding properties are zoned R125, low-density, single-family residential. That's the dark green. Henry Leavenworth Elementary School to the east, as well as the residential lots on the north side of Vilas closest to 20th, are zoned R19, medium-density, single-family residential. That's the lighter green that you see quite a bit of. The Whispering Hills Single Family Residential Neighborhood to the west is zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development. And the Edgewood Single Family Subdivision to the southeast is zoned R16, which is High Density Single Family Residential. And let me just get this layer off. Okay, the next is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The subject property is currently zoned R125, Low Density Single Family Residential, which is typical of agricultural or large lot residential subdivisions in the city. The property is vacant and is surrounded by single-family residential uses on varying sizes of lots, but this may be suitable for a variety of residential uses. A previous request by the property owner to rezon the subject property to RMF, which is Residential Multifamily District, was considered by the Planning Commission in 2020. The Planning Commission at that time voted to recommend denial of that multifamily zoning request, and the applicants ultimately withdrew the application prior to consideration by the city commission, so that they could go back to the drawing board and come up with another plan for the property. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have, should not have a detrimental effect on nearby property. The proposed six residential lots are consistent with the scale of development in the area and will not introduce a significant increase in traffic. The associated final plat does dedicate additional right-of-way for Vilas Street to accommodate future improvements to Vilas. And as with all developments, all stormwater would be required to be contained on-site and would not be allowed to affect any nearby properties. The next is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant and zoned. The property has always been single-family or agricultural in nature. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reductions upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning would have a positive effect on the economic vitality of Leavenworth by allowing for additional residential development. The next is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend that the item be approved. The next is the conformance of the request to change the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. This area is identified as appropriate for conservation or open space uses on our future land use plan. And I will turn that layer on for you now. The comprehensive plan states in regard to the conservation open space category that conservation areas balance the protection of sensitive environmental features with the development rights of property owners. Areas of conservation are appropriate in areas containing steep slopes, woodlands, drainage corridors, or other valued natural features. The size of the proposed lots will allow for homes to be situated while preserving open space and natural features on this vacant land. The comprehensive plan also identifies infill residential development that is appropriate to the character of the neighborhood as a strategy to accomplish the goal of promoting growth and development that is sustainable, responsible, and meets the needs of future generations. And this proposed infill development does meet that strategy of the comprehensive plan. The final, is any other factors as may be relevant to a particular proposed amendment. Factors considered in taking action on any proposed amendment shall be included in the minutes, and there were no other factors of note that staff would bring up. After the required notice was published and mailed to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property, staff did receive several inquiries from notified property owners about the nature of the request. I think most folks remember the previous multifamily zoning request. So, of the residents that actually called our office, when we explained that this was a single-family rezoning request, the property owners that we spoke to indicated that they referred this rezoning request to the previous multifamily and did not have any objections to this proposed rezoning. I'm just going to get this one there. So, getting into your actions, there are a few actions. Since the Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial of this, your first option would be place an ordinance on first consideration to approve the rezoning request. In order to do that, that would require a 2/3 majority vote, which in this case, with a five-member commission, would be four votes in favor of, in favor of moving this forward. You could vote to deny the rezoning request, or you could vote to return this to the Planning Commission, along with a statement specifying reasons for your return, and have the Planning Commission reconsider that, should that happen, and the Planning Commission reconsider. and the Planning Commission reconsider it. That would then come back to the City Commission after they considered it, and at that point, only a simple majority vote would need to, be needed to move it forward instead of a two-thirds majority unless there were a protest petition filed. So we've got the property owner here, and if you have any questions for me, I can answer those for you as well.
Madam Mayor, if I can just briefly comment.
Yeah.
If you wanted to move forward on this, you could move it by consensus tonight. The final action, however, would take a two-thirds vote at that point.
Okay.
So if there's going to move forward, you would need to know that. Unless the Planning Commission, unless the commission sends it back to the Planning Commission, and then it comes back, at that point, the supermajority vote goes away. But that's, that's the standard then for final action at least, but you might keep that in mind. I know you've also heard me say this, I think with every application that's come through, I'm just going to repeat myself again, to remember in these zoning matters, you're acting in quasi-judicial capacity. It's also important that there be a good record of your reasons for your actions taken, whatever they are, and those should generally be based on the, the factors that were discussed by Ms. Hurley here today. And it's good to have that type of record for your discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Waters.
Property owner first?
Oh, yeah.
And maybe residents after?
Yeah, Mr. Greenemeyer's here. If you want to come up and state your name and address, please.
Jeremy Greenemeyer, Greenemeyer Reynolds, 2500 South Second Street, Levinworth, Kansas. Thanks. So yeah, I've got a chance to work with staff on putting together this second option for this piece of land. And as Ms. Hurley pointed out in her staff report, our rezoning request is consistent with development in the area, meets the strategy, the strategy of the Comprehensive Plan, both in allowing for preservation of open space and allowing for infill development appropriate for the neighborhood. It was noted that it would, quote, "have a positive effect", and we got staff recommended approval. There's a couple of things I'd like to note on here that were not covered. Can I get the first slide, please? So this was my attempt to illustrate. I know Ms. Hurley had noted that there is, is some R19 currently in the neighborhood. In here, what I attempted to illustrate is the six lots that we have in the purple is the ones we're attempting to rezon tonight. However, along this section of street, the five, sorry, six lots that are indicated in red are essentially non-conforming uses, and if they were to be zoned correctly, they would fall into the same zoning we're requesting. As you can tell, we're on three-quarter acre lots with 110-foot of frontage. The two lots to the east are actually narrower lots, and there's a couple lots that are across the street that are actually smaller in size. So in addition to there being some R19 currently on this section of street, if things were zoned correctly, there would be even more lots that shared our same zone, same zoning. So some of the things that I think would be additional positives to the neighborhood and to the city in general is obviously just the, the additional housing. I know the city and the commission hears regularly from people looking for additional housing options. This would provide the six, six additional lots for single-family development. In addition to that, we agreed to deed 20 feet of right-of-way along Vilas Street for the future expansion of Vilas whenever that happens. A street impact fee will be assessed to whoever pulls the permit on these. Can I get the second slide? Thank you. We are also required to extend sewer to the ends of our property for neighbor, for neighbor connections. So, excuse me, step over here. As you can tell, the existing sewer ends up about right here and right here. The lots we are looking to rezon are here, so if we pull sewer up to here or over to here, you'll be connecting some number of people who are currently not on the city, the city sanitary storm sewer. That's our expense to do, put it in the easements, and also extend the utilities at least to the edge of our property. Just looking at, you know, maybe this should have come under the budget portion of the meeting, but I, you know, if, I'm assuming these are probably going to be $400,000 homes. That seems to be the starting price of new homes in the Levinworth area, you know, which could generate, you know, $35,000, $40,000 per year in property taxes. Tonight, you'll probably hear some objections to our plan. Some of the ones that I remember from the Planning Commission had to do with drainage issues. And while drainage, my understanding, is a public works issue and would be handled before permits were handed out, we did have our engineer do a drainage report, you know, June 7th of 2022. Just reading from the summary here, quote, "No detention is recommended for the site due to the small increase in runoff from the site. However, it is recommended that the south half of each lot be maintained as meadow pasture and remain undisturbed and become a vegetative filter strip for water quality purposes." And there, so their recommendation was keeping the south half of the lot as a non-developed, on a 300-foot deep wide, or a 300-foot deep lot. That should not be tough to do. One of the other objections I think you'll hear is possibly about traffic on Vilas. As stated, the, when we were in here in December of 2020, looking at a multifamily rezoning, traffic was much more of an issue, from what I understand from staff and from Chief Kitchens. It has been largely abated due to onsite parking at the school. I'd also like to note, there is really nothing we or any individual property owners who are looking to develop their property can do about the streets. We can only affect what is in front of our properties, and I believe we're doing that by paying the road impact fees. If there is a desire to improve the streets, obviously, the city would be one person who could do it. If it's that big of a concern, the neighbors could always enter into a benefit district and self-fund. Some of the other, another objection I've heard is that this is the wrong fit for the neighborhood. Hopefully, on my previous slide, I printed it out that actually R19 is already present in the neighborhood and even has some smaller lots and/or narrower lots right across the street or next door. There's been some objections to the potential size of the finish of these homes. We are building these as developable lots, so I can't really speak to what's going to be there. But this is why the city has codes and standards to make sure that appropriate houses are put on the appropriate-sized lots. And there's been a couple of people who have mentioned that they didn't want rentals, or they were concerned about having rental units and renters in this area. Again, since we are just planning for these to be developable lots, I can't really speak to what is going to happen here. I would suspect that anyone building a house out here is not going to go the immediate rental route. I'm glad Mr. Waters kind of addressed the, what the goal of tonight's meeting is. And if this is denied, I would request to know which of the nine considerations the staff had, or excuse me, that the commission had an issue with, and if I could get some specificity on that, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenemeyer.
It's up to you whether you'd like to allow, if there's anybody else here to speak about it. It's up to the commission.
Did anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Please come on up, state your name and address. And you just have, yeah, just a couple minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Baker. I live at 2101 Limit Street there, Levinworth. Can I step up to that?
Yeah, can you take the microphone with you, if you can, just so we can get it on the, on the recording? Thank you.
He's right. Mr. Greenemeyer, our fight is not with Mr. Greenemeyer. Our fight is with this street, these two streets here in between Vilas Street and Limit Street. The people in this area feel like we kind of got screwed on this deal because when they built this school, they didn't add, they didn't put in new streets for all the traffic coming around here. No parking for the, for the cars. So at 3:00, around 2:30, 3:00, these streets get congested with all the people coming, going to this school, picking up their kids. They were, at one time, they were parking into this subdivision here, getting out of their cars, throwing trash out the, I mean, if I lived in that subdivision, I would have been pissed. You couldn't even get a fire truck or any EMS services down these streets at that time because the cars were lined all up around the sides and back down to the street. Now, they did come in and put a parking lot in here, and that just started just this year. This is the first year that they had for the parking lot. So we don't really know what the traffic's like in the parking lot right, as of right now. It's not stacked up like what it was before. But then again, in the wintertime, it's a whole different story because this street is so narrow that when you're driving down, down the street this way and another car's coming the other way, there's no markings in the street. There's no curb in the street. So somebody could easily, and they have, ran off the side of the road and run into people's yards. This sidewalk for the kids to walk up and down this street here has no protection of a curb whatsoever. So if a car did come across there while kids are coming down the street, hell, they could hit them, do anything. So we weren't, when they did this project here, they did not protect the kids. They did not protect any of us here. This street is narrow. There's no money in the budget to widen this street or do any updating to the street. And the, the reason why it is in that zone is because of, there's been no improvements in this area. I don't think this has been improved since the 60s. You've got a lot of traffic coming out of this subdivision here, trying to go places. And the only places they can go, when it's congested over here, is down Limit Street. And I don't know if you've ever driven down Limit Street, but it's like a horse and buggy street. It's only one lane. It's big as an alley. Have any of you been down these streets over here?
Yes.
You know how narrow it is. Well, I live right here, and so for me to get down here with all the traffic, sometimes I had to wait before I could get to my driveway to my house. So that's why they've been denying this, is because the road just is not suitable for more traffic. I know he wants to put in six houses or whatever, but if you take six houses times three or four cars, you're adding to the problem. You're not helping the problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Hi.
Hi, Janice Baker, 2101 Limit. I'll start out with saying low-density, single-family housing. The example that was shown up there of what does, what does qualify for what Mr. Greenemeyer is going after is not what's out there. I live on seven acres. The majority of the individuals sitting in this room live on five acres or more. So there are a few lots out there, but the majority of us, number one, live on acreage. Number two, yes, I'm concerned about the drainage, very concerned about the drainage. I carry, to the tune of $1,500 a year flood insurance on my home. There's been patchwork done out there on 22nd Street, but it's patchwork. We still flood out there. We flood out there all the time. Number three, and probably most important, safety. Safety has not been considered. I walk Limit Street, I walk Vilas every day. A car has popped up on the sidewalk, on their phone, popped up on the sidewalk when my dog and I are walking. Additionally, I will tell you, there was a bus this week, last week, this week, on Limit Street. I had to back up to let the bus go through. There's huge potholes on this road. You cannot pass cars two ways. Why would we add, we already have four lots there. Why would we add more lots to that, to that area? Then let's talk about, okay, we're going to add more lots, we're going to add more traffic. We're going to add cement trucks, we're going to add sheet rock trucks, we're going to add shingle trucks delivering shingles. Vilas is crumbling, Limit is crumbled. I mean, that's the status. I would encourage you, before you make a recommendation tonight, you drive out on the road and look. On this corner of 22nd and Limit, that holds water. There's so many potholes there. Chris is not here, he's in the Army and he's on duty, but his, his yard floods all the time, and that area is, it's dangerous. You know, we, I think the challenges are, it's all for the school being up the road, all for the school being up the road. No infrastructure. Here we go again, trying to increase what we've got coming into this area, no infrastructure. I would encourage to leave that, it was asked at the planning and zoning, what would you do if you owned this property? You've got four lots there. I know what, I've lived out there 26 years. I know when this property is sold. I know what was paid for this property. There's good money to be made with four lots. We do not need more than four lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Heintlmann. I live at 289 Limit Street, which is on Limit Street right across from his property. The part that he's not trying to get rezoned at this point, but we don't know what he's really going to do with it, is a grass area at this point, with trees growing up on it where there used to be a house at one time. So when I built my house there, it was, there was a small house there. Mr. Riley bought it, the property, about a year after I moved there. The sign was up for one day, you know, for sale, and he bought it. So he was going to develop it someday. So he decided that, after many years, he had it for 18 years at least, that it was just too expensive to develop because the city kept telling him he had to improve Vilas and Limit both to do it. Okay, you know, for his section of where he's building, to do a subdivision. So he basically decided it wasn't worth doing that way. So he put the property for sale. So he made double his money, basically, but he still didn't make a lot of money. So at that point, the next thing I'm mostly concerned about is flooding. Both of the drainage areas off of this property, as you can see on this map, my house is right here, okay? And there's a creek right here where these trees are, come down from this property up here. So all this drains here, or it drains over here to this here, behind this people's house that, right here, the beamens, okay? So it drains either this way or this way. And as you follow this creek line, they both join together on my property here, okay? So I've had a bridge down here before that I built 10 years ago. It's four feet off the ground, across the creek. And so I could ride a four-wheeler across it or something. It has been washed out and gone. The, I have pictures here of, right here between me and Mr. Baker's house, where it's been really deep. I mean, if you want to see him, I'll show him. So, and like, I have an area in my backyard that's got like a culvert also, for like 30 or 40 feet. And it goes over the top of it, and it's like a two-foot culvert. So, and it gets about four feet deep there. So with the impact of the school adding a new parking lot here, we got more runoff here coming down the same creek because they're, all their runoff here, they got a little retention bond here, but they didn't increase the size of that when they built their new parking lots. Okay, so we've got more runoff here. If we build houses up here, you got all the runoff from their roofs and their concrete driveways and everything there, and it's going to come down this creek or back over here. So it's got to go one way or the other. So that's why I think they need to do it right if they're going to do it, and do a subdivision, and put sewer and drains in, or not do it and just put it like, like Mr. Baker said. You know, you could do two houses up here and two down here, and you'd have, still make some money on the lot, the property. But, you know, he, he won't tell us what he's going to do down here eventually. He said, right at this point, he just wants to ingratiate or pasture. Well, he ain't going to pay to pasture it forever. He's going to do something.
Okay, thank you.
You know.
Thank you, Mr. Heintlmann.
That's my point.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We don't watch, wait for Jermaine. Did you have to ask?
Why did the Planning Commission deny it, recommend denial, you know?
Um, well, you have minutes for it to read. They were sympathetic to the, the concerns of the neighbors, and they felt the, the commission, I think we have a couple of Planning Commission members here, if you want to hear from them, but it, I think they wanted to get a motion just to move it forward to the City Commission at that point.
Yeah. No, I, I did read it, but that was last Friday. And there's been something else kind of occupying my thoughts.
I can make a comic, you know, you have to, which Mr. Waters would say too, or, you know, you, when you look at a rezon-
or, you know, you, when you look at a rezoning, you have to look, like Mrs. Hurley brought up, the eight golden factors. That's what you have to look at. You know, there's a lot of other things that are on the outside, but whether you wanna approve or not, it's depending on these eight golden factors. You know, if you pick one or two out, so.
I mean, I would, I would say there's several different layers of controls. You have a zoning layer of control as, as, which speaks to use, is the use that is asked for appropriate for the property, just, you know, versus certain residential, versus commercial, versus industrial, that type of use. Third layers of controls have to do with the planning process. And, you know, dedicating setbacks, establishing those things, you know, things like that to the planning process. And the third layer of control is building codes and such.
So would drainage be one of those issues? Because that's my biggest concern.
I mean, I, I think drainage is probably primarily handled through your subdivision regulations and your other drainage codes as to requiring that applicants cannot, and I'm overgeneralizing here, you know, they're, they, they cannot really add to problem drainage areas. They can't add more to the problem. They have to either figure out a way to have it onsite detention, filter it in some way, undergrounding it, whatever it might be. Generally speaking, you know, the law doesn't say that the curvature of the earth and where things are high ground or low ground are not necessarily a problem that has to be corrected by an applicant, but they certainly cannot add to any situation. And that, that's required through the building permit process, drainage studies, and, and things like that.
And Mr. Waters, add into what Commissioner Wilson said, what about, where does the width of the street fall into kind of what you were saying there?
I mean, the width of the street could come in in some ways, in terms of, I, I probably look at it more as like the character of the neighborhood and whether a, for example, would a, a shopping center be a place here, be able to handle those things like that? So certainly it could be a, a factor. It's probably more of a factor in, in plating and what kind of need for right-of-way and such is. But in terms of, of use, I mean, I think the abilities of roads to handle some things doesn't really necessarily go into, is the use itself an appropriate use? I mean, the use could be just fine, given the surrounding uses of the property and such. So I think it's somewhat of a different question.
The, the plat, the, um, kind of goes along with this, that the Planning Commission tabled pending discussion of this by the City Commission, as noted, that does dedicate additional right-of-way on Vilas Street for future road improvements. And, you know, we can't compel a property developer to improve that entire street, you can only deal with what's right in front of him.
Right.
And so, you know, the best option is for us to get that additional right-of-way so that at some point, that can be dealt with properly. But that additional right-of-way is intended to be dedicated with the plat, should the rezoning ultimately move forward and the plats come back and move along.
So in a way, the two issues can be related but separate. I mean, a, a use definitely then kind of can flow into a plat. Um, you know, I'll give you an example of, in, in my own city, the Shawnee Mission School District built a new elementary school, a property that was already zoned for it. They had the right to build it as that, under the zoning, under that consideration of the zoning matter. But we had a fairly contentious discussion over the site plan for that, and how drainage was to be handled, and those types of things. So again, that's kind of the, the layers of controls that are in place. And where you are at at this point is the upper layer of use. Is this the proper, is this a proper use for the property, given the golden factors? And then staff and other development review committees look down from there as to, is this proper site plan? Does it, you know, for, in our case, does the site plan for that school circulate traffic in a, in an appropriate manner? It's a little bit of a different question than is the use of a school on the site appropriate. Is, is drainage covered? Is screening provided as appropriate? Is right-of-way dedicated as needed? Does the traffic flow work? And those are related certainly to the, because what you approve as a use will flow into that. But again, that's kind of at the next level of consideration.
Right. So this is just a consensus.
It's a little bit different then, is the use a proper use for this property, given the golden factors?
And I do wanna make it clear, you said this is the first step, but all the commission approves is the rezoning. The, the next step, supplying those, those to go to the Planning Commission. But those development regulations are at the staff. So if we have a business that's going in and it's allowed by use, but we have concerns for traffic, we can require a traffic safety study. That allows us to make those considerations or take those considerations in place. But that's done at a staff level.
The City Commission's role in the plating process would be acceptance of right-of-way easement. So a plat could come back to you, that on behalf of the city, you would accept any dedicated right-of-way. So, but that's the limited scope that a plat would come to this. Otherwise, it's handled by the staff and the Planning Commission.
Mr. Kramer, I'm still waiting to hear back. Th- this is the area that was designated for your, the grant requirement.
I'm happy to provide, you know, just as, as though we're clear that these are two separate issues, but I, I can comment on the street. So the city is hopeful. We submitted a transportation alternative grant through the state to completely reconstruct Vilas from twenty to twenty-second. And so we expect to hear in early September on that. Again, this is about anywhere between a one-point-eight and two-point-two million-dollar project to reconstruct and put stormwater in there. So that's not something that's, that's the entirety of the annual pavement management budget. So we did, we did do that, and we hope to hear soon.
And that, that would take care of?
Well, it would reconstruct the street and put sidewalks on both sides, curb and gutter.
Widen it.
And widen that a little bit. But I, I should say that that is, that is the, that's a state grant that we put into our relief because of the school and the residential, that it met the criteria, but you never know until they work in.
Sure, sure. Right. Okay.
I would like to see what's gonna happen with that.
I know.
Or making a decision.
I don't wanna put it in the back pocket, but you did.
Mr. Greenemeyer, would you mind answering two questions for me?
Yeah, 'cause that's my concern.
Yeah, you need to get on the mic, I guess. I just, just so that I am clear, how much of that land do you own, not just what you wanna have rezoned?
Yeah, we own the, an additional, Sarah, can you pull it up?
I got it here.
Okay. Yeah, so there's the additional, the, what we call the, the south half of it, which is gonna remain zoned R-one-two-five.
Do you want your slide up?
I can.
Yes. So you got, you've got these three lots, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's about eight and a half acres in total.
Yep.
So we're zoning the five acres, or four-point-five acres on Vilas. Part of our decision-making process here had to do with when we made the multifamily rezoning request in December of 2020. There was a lot of concern, or mostly concern, I think, was what you heard from Mr. Baker, about the condition of Vilas, or excuse me, of Limit Street out there. And so that's why we made the decision ultimately, just to do the development on the north half of Lot, face the, face the lots towards the much better street, and leave the, leave everything zoned as-is for what's facing Limit Street. Mr. Heintman's exactly correct. I mean, you know, anything could happen, but, you know, I would suggest that if we were to come back for a rezoning hearing, I'm sure you, I mean, you'd have to know about it, and this would be a whole nother consideration. So that's why we have kept the south half out of it because of the condition of the street. Did that answer your question as far as ownership?
Yep. And so you don't own anything east or west of that?
That's correct. It's these, these three lots here.
Yep.
Everything's taken into that other areas, built in.
Okay, yeah. The, the east, to the east and west of that, other people own. So the top half there, the lots, that you're looking at getting rezoned, a hundred and ten wide, what's the depth?
About three hundred.
Okay.
And just one other thing I'd like to point out is, we could have, under the R-one-nine zoning, which is what we are requesting, we could have gone with an eight-lot request for a, for a re, and still been in that same zoning. We went down to, because that would have put us at eighty-two and a half foot wide lots, which would have been acceptable under the R-one-nine zoning. We chose the hundred-and-ten-foot wide lots, just because we felt like it was a better fit for the neighborhood. So, I mean, there, there has been some consideration and some give back on our part as far as making this fit in here, and also making a, making a pencil out.
And do you see anything that you and, and your company would be doing to the south lots to, to evade some of the problems with drainage?
I mean, we have, this is all gonna be developable lots for sale. So you, you're gonna have, whoever ends up buying these lots will be the ones to, who can answer that question, when, when they're working through with staff.
Process.
Yeah.
Right. They have to go through the process with.
Our, our plan to make these developable lots is to extend utilities so that people can, can build on them, and there'll be for-sale signs in front of them.
Commissioner Bowder?
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Bowder, did you have anything?
No, it's, this is, no, I don't have anything. I'm supportive of, of going ahead with this project.
Okay. Do I have a consensus, consensus?
Yeah.
Do you?
No.
What, what are our options to, to wait until September to find out?
I mean, I think that, because this is a quasi-judicial process, I mean, there are ways for you to table matters on this. But I think if it was a decision that is based on the receipt of a grant, I think that goes a little, in my opinion, that goes a little far beyond the factors that the court asks you to consider, as to whether the, you know, whether the approval of a third-party grant, is that determined whether the golden factors have been met or not? I'd probably be a little bit uncomfortable with that. That is not to say that, I mean, you would have an option tonight to send this matter back to the Planning Commission if you wanted. What the law requires is that if you do that, you provide a statement to the Planning Commission of the things that you want them to reconsider or look at. So that is an option available to you.
Thank you. And part of the golden factors could be the, the road size being tied into that. You're saying there's, you know, sounded like that was gray. So I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, I mean, I think I was more tied into that, how things like the roads may be related in terms of that plating comes up. That, whatever plat is found is a function of what the zoning is. So when the site plan or plat comes up, and you're looking at things like the right-of-way that is needed and things like that, I would probably be a little less comfortable saying that the city is on. There are, there, there is case law out there that allows for softer factors on things. I think those are generally disfavored by the courts, because they can be used as, I think the language the courts have used, those can be used as a pretext for just saying, I'm not, just, I just don't like something. So generally, the courts offer the guidance that you should look at those factors set forth, that truly set forth, and base your decisions based on that.
Another thing I'll notice is that, I note is that it does have to come back before the governing body for our final vote. This is on first consideration. And so, nothing that, that first consideration is, is just that. If it's on first consideration, it would return back to the commission.
Okay. So Nancy?
At, at which point, with a, with a recommendation of denial, that would require the two-thirds supermajority vote to pass.
The, the next.
Right.
It's just consensus.
And on second consideration. Unless you were to send it back to the Planning Commission with a statement, and then it comes back through, then it would not require this.
Which you could still do on second consideration.
Pardon?
Which you could still do.
You're just still doing second.
Right. So if you, there's a consensus, a simple consensus, it would move forward for the September thirteenth meeting, then the commission would have it under second consideration. At what point, your still options are still?
Your options at that point are still the same.
Okay. So Nancy said yes?
Yeah.
And?
Yeah.
What do you say? I say yes.
We, they have a consensus at that point?
Yeah, okay. For first consideration.
Right. And so?
Yeah, yeah.
First consideration.
Yep.
Okay. I, I would, we, we, Commissioner Wilson as well?
Okay.
No.
Okay. Oh, okay. Guess it's my turn. Well, actually, Commissioner Martin, it's your turn.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
I do move to approve the claims for August sixth, 2022, through August nineteenth, 2022, in the amount of seven hundred and twelve thousand, thirty dollars, twenty-five cents, net amount for payroll number sixteen, effective August twelfth, 2022, in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-one cents. No police and fire pension.
Okay. I need a second.
Okay.
Could I ask the commission one, one question real quick? Is there any way that you could require the school to have entrance off of here, to go into their new parking lot across here? Because it is very deadly down this street. If you're between eight o'clock, seven-thirty in the morning to, and at three-thirty, this road, every kid that goes to that school flies down this road and around there. And everybody in that neighborhood over there don't wanna have this light, so they come this way. So is there any way that the city can push the school to do something with that? Or is that just out of?
No.
All on the school?
Okay. I appreciate your input, but we're, yeah.
I would just, didn't know if you had a way you could do that.
Okay.
What is going on?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. What's going on?
We're back on track.
We're back on track. Okay. So hold on.
Commissioner Wilson, second.
Second. Okay. Begin voting with the consent agenda. Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay. That is done with our meeting. Mr. Kramer, did you have any?
Yeah, I do. Just, we, we did the temporary liquor closure for Camp Leavenworth. Note to the commission that our next study session, September sixth, we'll have a final Camp Leavenworth update. Some really exciting stuff on vendors and food trucks and a business bulletin board that's already gotten a lot of attention. I know Penny's working on that. And so September sixth, we'll have a final update on Camp Leavenworth, give you some numbers, give you some final information on that. I'd like to note that micro-surfacing, which is the first half of our annual pavement management program, is scheduled to start on Thursday. Micro-surfacing is not chip and seal. We are not doing any granite sealing this year. Some of the big sections for the micro-surfacing to start Thursday and Friday. Pennsylvania Tenth Avenue to Second Avenue, which is a huge stretch. Miami, Tenth to Broadway, Sixteenth from Limit to Santa Fe. There's, and Osage from Tenth to Broadway, a couple of big projects there, before we get into Mill and Overlay over the next thirty to forty-five days. Hawthorne Splash Park had water going through it today. If, I have a video to show, so the, the concrete's in, the water lines are hooked up. And so we're still hoping to have a ribbon-cutting this year, but that project's been great. We met with the Veterans' Day Parade Committee yesterday, so get that on your schedule. They have a lot of cool stuff planned for this year's Veterans' Day Parade. So that's coming up before you know it. And then just a quick note that next Tuesday is the fifth Tuesday, so we will have no commission meeting next week.
Okay. We just said no commission meeting next week. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bowder, did you have any final words?
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't have been there with you tonight. Hope I get over this real soon, and I'll see you next time.
Oh, no. Get better soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you can do it.
Yeah. Commissioner Bowder, you're in our prayers. And I, I hope you are feeling much better very soon.
Thank you. That's very thoughtful. Thank you.
You know, I, I know it's no fun to be sick.
Yeah.
I've done it. No, other than that, just, I hope everybody is gonna go about their lives, taking care and being careful, keeping safety in, safety in mind.
Man, just wanted to just send a special prayer out to man, anybody who's suffering depression. I know suicide is just impacting the young generation and adults as well. Just really wanna pray to encourage them. If you see someone who's looking down out in the community, and just say some encouraging words to them and brighten up their day. Because I think we all need to be uplifted during these trying times that we're all going through.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner?
And Commissioner Bowder, we do hope to see you back in the chambers again soon. It definitely stinks to, to be sick, and seems like there's always something going around. So wish you a speedy recovery, and definitely wish everybody the best this week. God bless, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yeah. Have a safe, great week. So I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Sorry, second. Begin voting, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Commissioner Nancy?
I know. Commissioner?